Good evening. I'd like to call to order the August 2nd, 2021, Meeting of Tiffin City Council for Order this evening will be led in the invocation and pledge of allegiance by Councilman Leopard.
Will you please join with me in the words prayer? Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; that will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thy name is kingdom, and the power, and glory forever. Jesus' name. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the wisdom with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk of Council, Ann Forrest, please call the roll.
Councilman Leopard.
Present.
Councilman Perkins.
Here.
Councilman Perry.
Present.
Councilwoman Boyle.
Here.
Councilman Gillig.
Councilwoman Anatuno.
Here.
Councilman Jones.
Present.
Let the record show that six of the seven council members were present. Do we have any petitions?
There are no petitions, Mr. President.
Hopefully, everybody's had an opportunity to read the minutes from our July 19th, our regular and committee of the whole meeting, and our special meeting for July 22nd, or 20, excuse me, 26th. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions? Seeing none and without objection, the meeting minutes will be approved as presented. We're now on committee reports. Finance Committee, anyone from the Finance Committee?
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Law Community Planning, Councilwoman Boyle.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Materials and Equipment, Councilman Jones.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Personnel and Labor Relations, Councilman Perry.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Recreation and Public Property, Councilman Perkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Recreation and Public Property Committee met on Monday, July 26th, at 5:05 PM to discuss the mayor's request for legislation 21-13, Ohio Public Works Commission Grant. In attendance was Mayor Aaron Montz, Director of Law Brent Howard, City Administrator Dale Thornton, Director of Finance Kathy Kaufman, Clerk of Council Ann Forrest, City Engineer Matt Watson, Council President Rich Foote, Councilwoman Bridgette Boyle, Councilman Ken Jones, Councilwoman Dawn Iann Tuno, Councilman Dan Perry, Councilman Steve Leopard, Councilman Ben Gillig, and Councilman Zach Perkins. Engineer Watson stated that applying for the OPWC grant can provide an additional $500,000 to the Ellis Street Bridge, Bridge Replacement, excuse me. He also stated that $2 million in grant funding was, has already been secured, which would reduce the Ellis Street Bridge expense to approximately 1.5 million. Mayor Montz then proceeded to explain that the city would ask for more than $500,000 in their request, but would instantly lose 10 points off the grant approval, which would greatly reduce the likelihood of the city receiving the grant. Engineer Watson went on to state that the city has used this grant many times in the past, and that we always communicate with other officials in Seneca County to ensure that everyone is on board on where we are trying to allocate funds for the grant submissions. Councilman Perry proceeded to make a motion to have the Director of Law create legislation allowing for submission of the Ohio Public Works Grant, Commission Grant, Councilman Jones seconded. The motion carried on a vote of three to zero. With no other committee business to discuss, the meeting adjourned at 5:18 PM. There was a correction at the beginning. I originally put 21-16, it was 21-13.
Any questions for Councilman Perkins? Thank you. Street Sidewalks and Sewers, Councilman Leopard.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Economic Development and Downtown Planning, Councilwoman Yana Tuno.
Thank you, Mr. President. Meeting was held in the council chambers on July 26th, 2021, starting at 4:39 PM. Its purpose was to review and discuss the recommendations of the mayor in regards to Legislation Number 21-17, granting lease to Development Solutions LLC, Legislation 21-18, sale of land to Development Solutions LLC, and any other business to come before the committee. Attending were committee members Dawn Iann Tuno, Steve Leopard, and Bridgette Boyle. Councilmembers Zach Perkins, Ben Gillig, Ken Jones, Dan Perry. Council President Rich Foote and Council Clerk Ann Forrest were also in attendance. In attendance from the city administration were Mayor Aaron Montz, City Administrator Dale Thornton, Director of Law Brent Howard, City Engineer Matt Watson, Director of Finance Kathy Kaufman, as well as David Zach and Nick Dutrow from TSEP. Mayor Montz briefly explained the two items under consideration. Both deal with the same property at Eagle Rock Industrial Park. Lenny Klaus of Development Solutions LLC has previously built for this community five-spec buildings. Since all had been purchased, he would like to get in there as soon as possible to build another shell building. It will be a 50,000 square foot building that can easily be expanded up to 200,000 square feet. Legislation Number 21-17 is for a lease option that enables city council to suspend the three-reading rule and allows the builder to get in there as soon as possible. In regards to 21-18, the purchase of the same property, this legislation must adhere to the council's three-reading rule and would delay the start of this project by at least 60 days, which would be in October. The property is less than 13 acres and is being purchased for the going rate of $15,000 per acre. A motion was made by Councilmember Boyle for the Director of Law to create legislation for the lease agreement with Development Solutions LLC. It was seconded by Councilmember Leopard. This motion carried on a vote of three to zero. A motion was made by Councilmember Leopard for the Director of Law to create legislation for the purchase agreement with Development Solutions LLC for this same property. It was seconded by Councilmember Boyle. The motion carried on a vote of three to zero. With no further action needed at this time and no other committee business to discuss, our meeting adjourned at 5:04 PM. So that's for that. Now tomorrow night, we have another meeting listed, August 3rd, at 4:30 PM, and its purpose of the meeting was to review and discuss recommendations to create a City of Tiffin Municipal Arts Commission. And I would like to add at this time, mayor's request for Legislation Number 21-19, new three-year contract with City of Tiffin and TSEP, and any other business to come before that committee. And that's it.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilwoman Yana Tuno? All right. Does anyone see a need for a committee of the whole meeting? Moving on quickly. Porcy Officers is Honored Mayor Aaron DiMontz.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, we had been telling everyone that when we got through the end of July, we would have a very sound financial picture of where we were at for the city. Those of you on council received the update earlier today, if you did check your email. We had really a better July than we expected. We certainly were down a significant dollar value because that was expected last year with the income tax filing deadline changed until the middle of July. It certainly threw those numbers off. So we took in a lot of income tax revenue in July of 2020 that we took in much earlier this year. But by doing so, that now gives us a picture of where we are at. For those in council who may not have seen the email yet today, or keep hearing cheering.
That's the party bike.
Oh. I thought they were cheering when Rich asked if there's a need for the committee of the whole. Anyway, sorry, threw me off. So we, I completely, yeah, lost my train of thought. You get on a roll, and then you hear Danny's party bike go by. Anyway, so we finished July of 2021 down approximately $282,000 compared to July of 2020. I honestly was expecting it to be $300,000 plus, so anything we're under that is good news. In fact, we still beat July of 2019, which is probably the best year that you can compare the two to. Granted, we beat it by about $6,000. However, we were still ahead of 2019 numbers. So when all is said and done, I feel like we have a very good financial picture of where exactly we are at now that we finally are kind of back on an even keel of reporting versus last year. Year-to-date, we are ahead of 2020 numbers by approximately $727,000, which is an improvement to the good of 12.2% ahead of last year. So that is very sound, great pace, and we're just hoping that it continues. It's very good news for the city. We are on solid financial ground when it comes to our income tax revenue. Because of that, we have more dollars going into also the road and bridge levy, because that money is directly derived from income tax dollars. So that is very positive news. And then also into our capital improvements fund, of course, because a certain percentage automatically gets taken off of income tax collections and is automatically placed into their capital fund. So both are looking very healthy, which is very positive news on top of our general fund budget numbers. Also, speaking of all of that, we did last week have our mid-year update with the city insurance that we have. As many council members know, and some of you who are new to council may not know, that the city is self-funded with our insurance program. We are with a large group, so the entire risk is not on us. But last year's loss ratio was 97%. That's not at all where we're supposed to be, which is why we were hit with essentially a 15% premium increase. Right now, as of the end of June, our loss ratio is 84%, which is much, much improved, down 13% from the loss ratio. So the lower that number is, is the better, just for those of you that have not worked with that, I guess I should state that. And then we're, from where we were in 19, the loss ratio was 94%, so we're still 10% better than that. It's changed to the good. We're $161,000 ahead of where we were last year in the insurance account. So as we all know, with insurance, things can change in a heartbeat. One or two significant ongoing claims can change everything. But at least where we're at right now, we have the best buildup of funds and loss ratio, really, since we started the program. So things are starting to level out. We hope it continues, and we're hopeful that maybe this year, the insurance premium increase will only be in a more affordable 8% to 10% range versus the nearly 15% we were hit with last year. So that is very good news overall again. Tonight, you're also considering passage of the resolution for our statement that we would like to send to our state officials regarding stimulus funds. I would hope that council passes that under suspension this evening so that we can send it off immediately to our state rep, state senator, and to the governor's office. For those, I know that our last meeting, we briefly discussed it, but it wasn't televised, so the, since it was a special meeting. But it was frustrating, once we actually dug into the numbers, the City of Tiffin was originally set to receive 3.45 million. We are now set to receive approximately 1.8 million, so nearly cut in half by the state officials without any discussion. I know we've already talked, none of you had any heads up. I didn't have a heads up. No one knew that this was coming until it already happened. The sad part was, upon doing more research, no money was cut from the state government, no money was cut from county government, and in fact, the only cities that were, had this money taken away from them were cities with population of 50,000 or less. So all the larger communities in the state of Ohio were not hurt. We don't disagree that the townships don't deserve money. We agree fully, the townships need some stimulus money as well. But I think the frustrating part to us was, the money was taken from the city's pot of money instead of entities like Seneca County, which essentially governs the townships. You have over $10 million coming to Seneca County to the commissioner's office, and they have no idea how they're going to spend it all. Why wasn't that money taken and given to the townships? Why was it taken from cities, you know, like Tiffin having theirs cut in half, Austria cut in half, a lot of our smaller villages here, but yet the county is still whole? Large cities are still whole, and the argument could be made that it's the smaller communities that were hit the hardest anyway. So we're just very frustrated here at the city. Of course, we did not spend any of the money. We just have to drastically reduce now the things that we're going to be able to do to help the public and to make Tiffin a better and safer community, because our funds were cut nearly in half. So extremely disappointing that our state officials did this without any conversations here with anyone locally. Essentially did it, you know, an overnight quick vote to where no one would know, so there wasn't time for opposition, and it just seems like it was not thought out whatsoever. And it's just the state continuing to do what they've done for about the last decade, take more and more money away from cities, which if you look at the jobs in Seneca County, the vast majority of the high-paying jobs are located either in the City of Tiffin or the City of Austria. So to take the biggest income generators that we have in the county and take funds further away from us, where we could have used those funds for police protection, fire protection, sewer improvements, water improvements, broadband improvements, and other things, it just really is completely backwards thinking. So we're very disappointed. So I had urged council to pass that resolution this evening and send a message to our state officials. I would like to provide everyone with a brief update on the chief of police search. The deadline did end on the 30th of July, the close of business, which was last Friday. We have three applicants for the position, two of which are internal, one is an external candidate. All three of the applicants do actually reside in Tiffin, though. With that, we will be going forward with an assessment center late in August. The assessors will come down, put all three candidates through the assessment center, and from that, give us, us being myself and the city administrator, feedback on each and every candidate. They'll give us scores on how they scored on the written portion of their test, how they performed. At the inbox activities that they do, they actually throw some, several crazy scenarios at them, and actually, they'll spend part of the day planning on how they would deal with that. They even go over how they handle the press. If they have a press conference, they throw them through all sorts of these inbox activities that they call them. So we'll have a full report afterwards, and then of course, a recommendation to council. Hopefully sometime in September, we'll have the decision made. Just depends on how quickly the assessment center can gather all of the information, have reports to us. And of course, we're going to want to do interviews ourselves on at least the top one, if not two candidates that come out of this. So we're excited to see it coming to an end. I don't think anyone's more excited, though, than interim chief Windsor. He's loved this, but when I, when I talked this morning about the fact that we need to start our budget process soon, his eyes got pretty big, and, and that's where he basically said, "I tap out." He obviously would love for us to have a chief in place soon enough that the new chief could at least have a little bit of hands-on into the budget. But with that, we will be proposing the budget. My goal, I told everyone this morning, is that last year, we all know, was crazy with coronavirus and virtual meetings and trying to get everything done. I would like to have the budget to you by no later than that first meeting in November, so that there are no special meetings required around the holidays like we had to do last year. It was a little easier being virtual, but we still would like to get back in the swing of not having to do those special meetings for the city budget. So please try to keep your calendars as open as possible those first two weeks of November, because that's where we'll likely have the lengthy meeting where we walk through the budget with all of you sometime during those first two weeks. I want to thank everyone at the Seneca County Fair for a very successful 179th Seneca County Fair. It's a huge shot in the arm to our local economy. Just really good, good, family-friendly activities occurred all week long out there, from the opening ceremony on Monday to the close of things yesterday. Very quick update on the Irving, Urban Paving Program. That is the program that we are working on with the state of Ohio to pave essentially the entire length of Melmore Street. It starts at Hedges Street all the way south to the county line. Now, of course, the city is only working with the state on the portion in the city, and then also a stretch of South Sandusky Street, and then North Washington, or excuse me, South Washington Street is being paved from the bridge all the way south to St. Joe's Church. That is underway. You probably had seen, Melmore Street has the base coat down. That's the big thick coat that they placed. It's a lot more rough course. They will be back eventually, once they get the rest of things done, to put in that smooth top surface and do the permanent striping. There's only temporary striping out there right now. We're aware it's not in the original spot. We've already had some folks contacting us about that. We're aware of that. The permanent striping will of course be placed in the correct area. And then you probably have noticed that downtown, the curb ramps are all torn up. That is in preparation for the downtown to be repaved this summer. Like I said, they'll start at the bridge on South-North, I don't know, the bridges, the demarcation line. So they'll start at the bridge on Washington Street, head south, tearing things out, but the curb ramps are under construction. That will take two to three weeks to complete those. Then they'll start milling for pavement. With that, all farmers markets will now be on Jefferson Street for the rest of this year. So Jefferson and Court Street will hold the farmers markets now for the remainder of the year, because we have the curb ramp work that has to be completed. Following the curb ramp work, they'll come in, mill the street down, grind it out, put in the base coat like they've done on Melmore, come back in with the top coat, then it has to be restriped, and then we come in, and then we'll be adding those decorative stamped concrete crosswalks throughout the downtown. So because of the construction schedule, we have, we've put in the contract that there has to be a brief pause for the Heritage Festival. It has to be in a good enough condition for residents to be able to utilize those areas, and then everything has to be wrapped up before the Halloween parade in downtown Tiffin on the 31st, and then we've been assured that it will be. The OPWC paving program. The OPWC paving project, also Ken, that's in your ward, that's everything on Hudson Street and those side streets over there that we had approved. They expect to begin sometime within the next two to three weeks. They'll start, just like downtown, with curb ramps for the replacement of all of those, and then they'll be doing the same. So Hudson Street, all of those side roads, and then unfortunately, the section of Hudson Street that is concrete near the Kennedy Bridge, that will have to be completely closed for a couple of days, that section, because it's concrete work and it has to have time to set. So 98% of this project is asphalt, but that small section on the sides of the Kennedy Bridge is concrete, so they will be closing that, and they'll coordinate with press release to let the public know in advance. It came up in committee of the whole, but the Melmore and Circular Street traffic signal will go to flash tomorrow. So that signal will be in flash, and the study will begin. Matt Watson assured me he's going to spend a good amount of time this week out there just sitting and observing the signal, counting cars, et cetera. And then he plans to do the same once school returns a little later in the year and spend a few, several hours each day out there monitoring traffic, seeing how things are flowing. They did remove a tree that was blocking line of sight today, as well as did some trimming in the area to make sure that the visibility is, is full. Also, it seems like the south side of town's really getting beat up with projects. Aqua began today on their new water main replacement, and that is on South Washington Street, and it's from St. Joe's Church south to Circular Street. They expect that could take plus or minus a month, that they're going to have lane closures. So as I've joked with people, if you can avoid just heading anywhere about south other than Sycamore Street, you may want to do so because everything, I think, between Co. and Sycamore is just a holy mess right now because you've got Columbia Gas out there, the street paving program, Aqua, and, and yeah, we, I think Dale, you joked this morning that we should just have, what, the fiber company out there running lines, and we'll just get everything done at once and not have to worry about it in a while. But that is part of the good news with all of these mains being replaced. It should be some time before any work is needed. And then, as I mentioned already in committee of the whole, you all have the new TSEP contract in your packets this evening. Councilwoman Yanatuno will be meeting tomorrow night to discuss that. So I really don't need to tell you anything else about it because we already talked in committee of the whole. Lots of events coming up in the community. There are two events this coming Thursday, the 5th of August. The first is a chamber cutting, chamber ribbon, chamber ribbon cutting and open house that's being held at Reinike Ford at 5:00 PM. Last year, during the coronavirus pandemic, they, they completely remodeled, remade, and expanded their lobby. So this is a ribbon cutting for that, as well as an open house, 5:00 PM on Thursday the 5th. That is open to the public. Council was invited if you're available. That same evening is our final Thursday night tunes that the Parks Department puts on at the East Green. Jake Heil is the concert, 7:00 PM on Thursday, August 5th, at the East Green. Jake Heil, Thursday night tunes. This coming Saturday, August the 7th, is the next East Green Summer Concert, and that is Jess Baldwin. She is a pop singer. That concert begins at 8:00 PM. Wednesday, August the 11th, there is another ribbon cutting in Tiffin for the new store Flooring by Michael. That is located at 656 West Market Street. That ribbon cutting is at 4:00 PM. Again, ribbon cutting, open house at Flooring by Michael, 656 West Market, 4:00 PM, open to the public. Council's encouraged to attend if available. Thursday, August the 12th, is the Educators Breakfast. That event is returning in person this year. You all are invited, but you do have to sign up. You can go on the Chambers website, or if you receive the Chambers regular emails, they've sent the link in there. Camden Falls, 7:30 in the morning, breakfast begins. The program is promptly at 8:00, so if you are planning to eat, please arrive by 7:30 so you have plenty of time to eat. And then last but not least, the next farmers' market is Saturday, August the 14th, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM on Jefferson Street, not typical. Concludes my report, Mr. President, but if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for the mayor? Thank you, Mayor. Clerk of Council, Ann Forrest.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Director of Finance, Kathy Kaufman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have the financial report for the month of July. Total receipts for the month were $3,261,341.64. Total expenses were $3,348,040.37. The general fund's unencumbered balance is $4,127,294.60. Income tax receipts for July 2021 were $747,570.31. This is a total annual decrease in income tax receipts comparing July 2020 to July 2021, and the difference was $281,723.27. However, year-to-date, we are still at an increase in income tax funds at a rate of The 0.25% portion of income tax receipts that was transferred into Fund 215 for Public Streets for July was $93,104.55. And the unexpendited balance for all funds is $30,304,632.1, which is the same as the bank balances for the same time period. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for the finance director?
We have a motion to accept the report.
Yes.
Councilwoman Boyle.
Thank you. I will make a motion that we accept the finance director's presented report.
And?
And reconciliation.
And the bank reconciliation.
Thank you. Is there a second, Councilwoman?
A second, Mr. President.
We have a motion and a second to accept the report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Director of Law, Brent T. Howard.
Thank you. Just one item regarding ordinances 21-60 through 21-70, the charter, proposed charter amendments. I've been in contact with the Board of Elections with the ballot language, shared with them, the draft, the ordinances. They have prepared then ballot language for me to approve. The local board has accepted the language. They're just waiting on council's consideration and passage of the 11 ordinances, and then I will provide, after passage, I'll provide certified copies to the Board of Elections by the end of the day on Wednesday. But the ballot language that you see in the ordinances should be the same ballot language that the voters will see in November. Any questions? That concludes my report.
Thank you. We're now under written communications.
We have mayor's request for legislation number 21-19, new three-year contract with city of Tiffin and Tiffin-Seneca Economic Partnership, TSEP.
Mayor's request for legislation number 21-19 has been forwarded to the Economic Development Downtown Planning Committee and will be discussed at their meeting tomorrow afternoon at 4:30.
Finance director's request for legislation number F21-26 to amend the 2021 budget ordinance 21-11 to appropriate funds into the general administration budget.
Finance director's request, request for legislation F21-26 will be held on file in the clerk's office. Ordinance 21-73 has been prepared for tonight's meeting.
Finance director's request for legislation number F21-27 for 2021 mid-year budget adjustments to cover decreases or increases in appropriations.
Finance director's request for legislation F21-27 will be held on file in the clerk's office. Ordinance 21-75 has been prepared for tonight's meeting.
That concludes the written communications.
Thank you. We are now under oral communications. Anyone from the attending public wishes to address council can do so by stepping to the podium, signing in, and addressing your comments to the president of city council. Okay. We're now under motions. Councilman Leopard.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask that resolution number 21-14 be read in its entirety.
Councilwoman Boyle.
I'll second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to read resolution 21-14 in its entirety. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion passes unanimously. All right, we are now under resolutions.
Resolution number 21-13, introduced by Zachary Perkins. Resolution authorizing the mayor to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission, OPWC, State Capital Improvement Program, to execute contracts as required and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of resolution 21-13.
Resolution number 21-14, introduced by Steve Leopard. Resolution strongly objecting to the state of Ohio's reduction in the city of Tiffin's share of the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds received from the federal government. Whereas the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery fund, the fund, established by the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, ARPA, provides emergency funding to eligible state, local, territorial, and tribal governments, and whereas the purpose of the fund is to deliver much-needed money to assist in responding to the COVID-19 emergency and its economic impact on communities. And whereas the city of Tiffin, like so many small cities across the state of Ohio and the country, have struggled over the last year with decreased tax revenues to maintain safety services that are essential for the well-being of its citizens, and whereas families and small businesses in Tiffin have especially been challenged during the pandemic with economic uncertainty and need financial support that could be provided by the fund, and whereas initial reports regarding the city of Tiffin's allocation from the fund were approximately $3.45 million. The state of Ohio, by concerted action of the governor and the state legislature, have now reduced the city of Tiffin's share to $1.8 million without explanation or justification. The council of the city of Tiffin, Ohio therefore resolves. Section 1, the Tiffin City Council strongly objects to the reduction of the city of Tiffin's allocation of money from the fund and requests that Governor Mike DeWine, State Senator Bill Reinike, and State Representative Gary Click attend a meeting of Tiffin City Council in person to explain their reasoning for decreasing the funding to the city of Tiffin and other small cities in Ohio which serve as the backbone of the state's economy and provide essential safety services to its citizens. Section 2, the clerk of council is directed to send a certified copy of this resolution to Ohio Governor Mike DeWine, State Senator Bill Reinike, and State Representative Gary
This is the first reading of resolution 21-14. Councilman Leopard.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask for suspension of city council's three-reading rule and passage of resolution number 21-14.
We have a motion to suspend council's three-reading rule and immediate passage of resolution 21-14. Is there a second? Councilman Perkins.
I'd like to second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a well-written document. I was reading through it, and one thing that really got my attention, and I think it'll get a lot of attention, is actually asking the governor himself to attend a meeting here in Tiffin. So that was well-written, and it really caught my eye, so just wanted to add that.
Okay. Anyone else? Councilman Leopard.
Might want to add a note and tell them what nights we meet.
Yeah, well, we plan, we plan to contact, we, all three of their offices to make sure that they know what nights we meet, give them personal invitations. We, we'll do everything we can to get them up here. I was asked if we thought it would, we were going to be successful in that, that happening. I would hope that our local representatives would be here to represent themselves in what's happened. Since we were not televised at the meeting when we discussed this last week, one of the things that's always been a pet peeve of mine is that there are 88 counties in the state of Ohio. Eighty-seven of those counties feed our government down in Columbus. There's one place in Ohio that never, ever has a recession, and guess where that is? They're drawing money from all of us, and this, this is slap, this is a slap in the face. We have worked hard in this community, as have other communities throughout Ohio. Austria has worked hard to try to improve their economic climate. We've invested money, invested time. We've done, I think we've done an outstanding job of getting things turned around here in the last 20, 25, 30 years. And it's not that we're not grateful for any assistance that we've gotten from the state in the past, but here's an opportunity. We could have done some really, really great things with this money, but to have it taken away from us, when they don't reduce state sales taxes, as an example. The bulk of that that's collected in Seneca County goes to Columbus. We don't have any say in that. So they keep, you know, and every, think about this. Everything that we do that generates economic development in our community benefits the state of Ohio, and they collect money, they collect sales tax off of that, and that, that amount never goes down. We don't have a say in what they're going to extract from us. But now, when they have an opportunity to help us out, what do they do? They turn their backs on us, and I'm really upset by it, as you can tell. So anyway, didn't have a chance to voice that to the public last week, but I'm voicing it tonight. And again, we're going to do everything we can to get our representatives up here, including the governor of the state of Ohio, but I'm not going to hold my breath that he's going to come. Councilman Perkins.
Yeah, I had some of the township officials that were very excited that they were getting more money, or some money, or whatever, and I think that they took it the wrong way, that we were upset about the cut here. It's not about them receiving the money or not receiving the money. We just don't believe that it should have been cut throughout the cities to supply to them. What about the state? The state did no cuts, you know? So I just want to make sure that they know that. We're not upset that they're getting money.
No, we're not, we're not upset, but the fact of the matter is that we had no voice in what the state did to us. And the fact that they're giving it to the townships, some of these townships aren't even sure that they can spend the money that they're going to get. We would have no problem with being able, because of the services that we provide, in, in, in being able to adequately use this money. So any, anything else? Okay. I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on a suspension, please.
Councilman Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Gillig. I'm sorry. Yanatuno.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
Resolution 21-14 is suspended with a vote of six to zero. We'll now take a vote on the passage of resolution 21-14.
Councilman Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Resolution 21-14 passes with a vote of six to zero. We're now under ordinances.
Ordinance number 21-58, introduced by Ben Gillig. Ordinance amending the 2021 budget ordinance number 21-11 to appropriate $15,000 into the civil service budget for materials and supplies needed for the police lieutenant and the deputy fire chief tests.
This is the third reading of ordinance 21-58. Councilwoman Boyle.
I'd like to ask for passage of ordinance 21-58.
We have a motion for passage of ordinance 21-58. Is there a second? Councilwoman Yanatuno.
I'll second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the passage.
Councilman Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
Ordinance 21-58 passes with a vote of six to zero.
Ordinance number 21-60, introduced by Steve Leopard. An ordinance providing for submitting to the electors of the city the question of a proposed amendment to section 3.08 of Article III of the Charter of the City of Tiffin to remove the reference to partisan primary consistently with the provisions of section 10.01 of Article 10 of the Charter of the City of Tiffin, providing for the holding of open primary elections, and to provide for gender neutrality in the language of those provisions and declaring an emergency.
This is the third reading of ordinance 21-60. Councilman Leopard.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask for passage of ordinance number 21-60. Charter review commission, thank you. Charter review commission's year-long work. During discussions, public feedback, and discussion with council members and administration, their suggestions turned into the form of an ordinance. And the final, the final say is going to be by the voters of city of Tiffin. Whether these are approved or not, it will go on the election ballot for November the 2nd. So please consider these ordinances when you vote this November. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I attended a few of the charter review commission meetings, and I fully understand the things. City council understands it, and I just want the public to understand it before November 2nd. We talked last meeting, and this is not what I was talking about, but something similar to this, redlining the 20 pages. We talked about getting that either to the advertiser Tribune, city's website. I just wondered, where are we at? Have we forgotten about that, or is that still?
Well, we haven't passed anything yet, so we're not in position to do anything. Law Director.
One thing, the AT reporter has contacted the city administration, including myself, and said they're very willing to provide information to publish in the newspaper. So they responded to kind of your request, and I think they'll be a partner in educating the community. And I'll provide the redline version you're talking about to the advertiser Tribune, and hopefully they can incorporate that into one or more of their newspapers.
And I think we're also going to have it on the city's website, too, so. I just meant that we haven't passed anything yet, so we're not, we couldn't move ahead on anything.
Move ahead, okay. Well, like I say, I was just, I mean, I've heard it explained twice, and it makes sense, but I just want the public to be aware of what they're voting on, that's all.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Leopard.
I'd just like to say a thank you to the charter review commission members who spent many, many hours discussing not only these topics in the, in the 11 ordinances that we're presenting, but other topics as well. It, they spent many hours at this. They had, they had some studying to do as well, and I appreciate all their efforts.
Thank you. Thank you. I think we all do. Anyone else? All right, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the emergency, please.
Councilman Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of six to zero. We'll now vote on the passage of ordinance 21-60.
Councilman Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Ordinance 21-60 passes with a vote of six to zero.
Ordinance number 21-61, introduced by Steve Leopard. An ordinance providing for submitting to the electors of the city the question of a proposed amendment to section 309B of Article 3 of the Charter of the City of Tiffin to authorize delivery of notice of special meetings of council to the mayor and members of council by delivery of notice by email to them at their city email addresses as an alternative to the other methods for delivering of notice, delivery of notice provided to them for in the charter and declaring an emergency.
This is the third reading of ordinance 21-61. Councilman Leopard.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask for passage of ordinance number 21-61.
We have a motion for passage of ordinance 21-61. Is there a second? Councilwoman Yanatuno.
I'll second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the emergency, please.
Councilman Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of six to zero. We'll now vote on the passage of ordinance 21-61.
Councilman Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
Ordinance 21-61 passes with a vote of six to zero.
Ordinance number 21-62, introduced by Steve Leopard. An ordinance providing for submitting to the electors of the city the question of a proposed amendment to section 4.02B of Article 4 of the Charter of the City of Tiffin to change the number of affirmative votes of members of council needed to waive the requirement of three readings of proposed ordinances or resolutions from three-fourths to two-thirds, as permitted by the general laws of Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
This is the third reading of ordinance 21-62. Councilman Leopard.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask for passage of ordinance number 21-62.
We have a motion to pass ordinance 21-62. Is there a second? Councilman Perry.
I'll second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the emergency, please.
Councilman Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of six to zero. We will now vote on the passage of ordinance 21-62.
Councilman Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
Ordinance 21-62 passes with a vote of six to zero.
Ordinance number 21-63, introduced by Steve Leopard. An ordinance providing for submitting to the electors of the city the question of proposed amendments to sections 4.04A, 4.08A, and 4.09B of Article 4, section 7.05A of Article 7, and section 9.04D of Article 9 of the Charter of the City of Tiffin to provide for publication of ordinances, resolutions, and various notices by posting on the city's website and by publication in a newspaper of general circulation in the city and alternatives if there is no such newspaper of general circulation, and to provide gender neutrality in the language of those provisions and declaring an emergency.
This is the third reading of ordinance 21-63. Councilman Leopard.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask for passage of ordinance number 21-63.
Thank you. We have a motion to pass ordinance 21-63. Is there a second? Councilman Perkins.
I'd like to second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the emergency, please.
Councilman Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of six to zero. We will now vote on the passage of ordinance 21-63.
Councilman Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
Ordinance 21-63 passes with a vote of six to zero.
Ordinance number 21-64, introduced by Steve Leopard. An ordinance providing for submitting to the electors of the city the question of a proposed amendment to section 5.01 of Article 5 of the Charter of the City of Tiffin to clarify the procedures to be followed in the event of a vacancy in the office of mayor at different points during a term, the duration for which the president of council would serve as mayor during an unexpired term if willing, the method of selecting a qualified elector to serve if the president of council were to refuse to serve as mayor, and the circumstances under which the president of council would be restored to that office after serving as mayor on a temporary basis and declaring an emergency.
This is the third reading of ordinance 21-64.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask for passage of ordinance number 21-64.
We have a motion, we have a motion to pass ordinance 21-64. Is there a second? Councilwoman Boyle.
I will second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the emergency, please.
Councilman Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of six to zero. We'll now vote on the passage of ordinance 21-64.
Councilman Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
Ordinance 21-64 passes with a vote of six to zero.
Ordinance number 21-65, introduced by Steve Leopard. An ordinance providing for submitting to the electors of the city the question of proposed amendments to section 6.01A, 6.02E, and 603A of Article 6 of the Charter of the City of Tiffin to eliminate residency requirements for the director of finance, the city administrator, and assistants to the director of law to bring those provisions into compliance with state law and to provide gender neutrality in the language of those provisions and declaring an emergency.
This is the third reading of ordinance 21-65. Is that your bad shoulder, or is that your?
This is my bad shoulder.
Councilman Leopard.
I would ask for the passage of ordinance number 21-65.
Thank you. We have a motion to pass ordinance 21-65. Is there a second? Councilman Perkins.
I'd like to second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the emergency, please.
Councilman Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of six to zero. We'll now vote on the passage of ordinance 21-65.
Councilman Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
Ordinance 21-65 passes with a vote of six to zero.
Ordinance number 21-66, introduced by Steve Leopard. An ordinance providing for submitting to the electors of the city the question of a proposed amendment to section 7.03A of Article 7 of the Charter of the City of Tiffin to provide that the mayor shall appoint all the members of the zoning board of appeals subject to approval by council and declaring an emergency.
This is the third reading of ordinance 21-66. Councilman Leopard.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask for passage of ordinance number 21-66.
We have a motion to pass ordinance 21-66. Is there a second? Councilwoman Yanatuno.
I'll second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the emergency, please.
Councilman Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
We'll now vote on the passage of ordinance 21-66.
Councilman Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
Ordinance 21-66 passes with a vote of six to zero.
Ordinance number 21-67, introduced by Steve Leopard. An ordinance providing for submitting to the electors of the city the question of proposed amendments to section 8.02 of Article 8 of the Charter of the City of Tiffin to expressly permit the city to utilize alternative methods of contracting and procurement authorized by general law to provide notice requests for bids for procurement contracts by posting on the city's website in addition to publication in a newspaper of general circulation in the city, if there is such a newspaper of general circulation, and to provide for additional methods of giving notice for the purpose of generating bids, and to provide gender neutrality in the language of those provisions and declaring an emergency.
This is the third reading of ordinance 21-67. Councilman Leopard.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask for passage of ordinance number 21-67.
We have a motion for passage of ordinance 21-67. Is there a second? Councilman Perry.
I'll second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the emergency, please.
Councilman Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of six to zero. We will now vote on the passage of ordinance 21-67.
Councilman Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
Ordinance 21-67 passes with a vote of six to zero.
Ordinance number 21-68, introduced by Steve Leopard. An ordinance providing for submitting to the electors of the city the question of proposed amendments to sections 10.01, 10.02, and 10.03 and 10.04 of Article 10 of the Charter of the City of Tiffin to clarify that candidates for all elected offices shall be nominated in open primaries in which candidates may, at their option, set forth their party affiliation or not, to specify requirements for statements of candidacy and petitions, to provide procedures for filling a vacancy due to a death, withdrawal, or disqualification of a duly nominated candidate, and circumstances in which right in voting for an elected office may occur, and to confirm the times and method of conduct of primary, regular municipal, and special elections of the city, and declaring an emergency.
This is the third reading of ordinance 21-68. Councilman Leopard.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask for passage of ordinance number 21-68.
We have a motion for passage of ordinance 21-68. Is there a second? Councilman Jones.
I'd like to second that, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the emergency, please.
Councilman Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
The emergency passes with a vote of six to zero.
Councilman Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
The emergency passes with a vote of six to zero.
Ordinance number 21-69, introduced by Steve Leopard. An ordinance providing for submitting to the electors of the city the question of a proposed amendment to section 11.08 of Article 11 of the Charter of the City of Tiffin to define the term "person" as used in the Charter to mean an individual and not a corporation, business, trust, estate, partnership, or association, and declaring an emergency.
This is the third reading, oh, excuse me, of ordinance 21-69. Councilman Leopard.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask for passage of ordinance number 21-69.
We have a motion for passage of ordinance 21-69. Is there a second? Councilman Perkins.
I'd like to second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the emergency, please.
Councilman Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
The emergency passes with a vote of six to zero. We will now vote on the passage of ordinance 21-69.
Councilman Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
The emergency passes with a vote of six to zero. We will now vote on the passage of ordinance 21-70.
Councilman Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
The emergency passes with a vote of six to zero. We will now vote on the passage of ordinance 21-70.
Councilman Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
The emergency passes with a vote of six to zero. We will now vote on the passage of ordinance 21-68.
Councilman Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
The emergency passes with a vote of six to zero.
Councilman Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
The emergency passes with a vote of six to zero.
Councilman Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
The emergency passes with a vote of six to zero.
Councilman Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
The emergency passes with a vote of six to zero.
Councilman Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
The emergency passes with a vote of six to zero.
Ten more years.
This only takes place every ten years.
Budgets every year, though.
Ordinance number 21-71, introduced by Don Yanatuno.
It is the Steve Leopard night.
Ordinance authorizing mayor to lease a parcel of approximately 12.31 acres in Eagle Rock Business Park for $1 and other consideration to Development Solutions LLC or its designee for the purpose of immediate occupancy thereof and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 21-71. Councilwoman Yanatuno.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask for the suspension of the three reading rule for ordinance 21-71 and immediate passage.
We have a, we have a motion to suspend council's three reading rules and immediate passage of ordinance 21-71. Is there a second? Councilman Leopard.
Second the motion, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilwoman Yanatuno.
I explained it during my report, but would you like me to state that again? It just moves things along a lot faster than waiting on the sale of the property. If we wait on the sale of property, they can't get in there till October, and so this enables Development Solutions to get in there now.
Thank you.
And get to work.
Anyone else? I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the suspension, please.
Councilman Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
The suspension passes with a vote of six to zero. We will now vote on the emergency.
Councilman Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
The emergency passes with a vote of six to zero. We will now vote on the passage of ordinance 21-71.
Councilman Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
The emergency passes with a vote of six to zero.
Councilman Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
The emergency passes with a vote of six to zero. We will now vote on the passage of ordinance 21-71.
Councilman Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
The emergency passes with a vote of six to zero.
Councilman Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
The emergency passes with a vote of six to zero.
Councilman Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
The emergency passes with a vote of six to zero.
Councilman Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
The emergency passes with a vote of six to zero. We will now vote on the passage of ordinance 21-71.
Councilman Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
The emergency passes with a vote of six to zero. We will now vote on the passage of ordinance 21-71.
Councilman Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
The emergency passes with a vote of six to zero.
Councilman Leopard.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I would ask for passage of ordinance number 21-62.
Thank you. We have a motion to pass ordinance 21-62. Is there a second? Councilwoman Perkins.
I'd like to second, Mr. President.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. We talked in the council the whole, and I made a note here. There's a deadline. That's why we're suspending the three reading rule when passing is emergency. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Right. I'll ask the clerk to call the vote on the suspension, please.
Councilman Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
The suspension passes with a vote of six to zero. We will now vote on the emergency.
Councilman Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
The emergency passes with a vote of six to zero.
Councilman Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Perry.
Yes.
Boyle.
Yes.
Yanatuno.
Yes.
And Jones.
Yes.
The emergency passes with a vote of six to zero. We will now vote on the passage of ordinance 21-74.
Councilman Leopard.
Yes.
Perkins.[1094.52]